All right, good evening. I'd like to call the June 5th meeting of Greenville City Council Order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Monica Daniels.
For the invocation filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Hopefully, somebody heard me.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus to thank you for this opportunity to serve your city, Father. And we pray that tonight, as we make decisions, that we make them without bias or any type of prejudice. Father, we pray that we work together in unity. And again, we thank you for allowing us the opportunity to serve those who you love, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Potem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Mayor Connolly, of course.
Thank you very much. Will I move on to the approval of tonight's agenda? Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
I have no changes this evening, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. We've got special recognitions, right?
Yes.
All right. To you. You know a thing or two of this. Uh-uh, uh-uh. All right, for our first special recognition tonight, the North Carolina Mock Trial Program teaches high school students about the justice system to create engaged citizens through the hands-on activity of mock trials. Students gain civic understanding, analytical skills, and communication skills that equip them with the confidence to go forth as tomorrow's leaders. We're pleased to have the J.H. Rose Mock Trial Team with us here this evening, who were recognized for their outstanding performance. They competed this spring in the state competition, placed first in the state. They went on to compete in the Nationals, placing eighth overall in the nation. Please join us in congratulating the team and their coaches. Now, I'm going to hand this over to a guy that knows a thing or two about trials. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. What a great opportunity to come and congratulate you guys. First, for those who don't know much about the Mock Trial Program, it's a program that began about 31 years ago, started by our local organizations in Raleigh, and it was designed to let high school students learn about the trial system and about the system of justice and jury trials. And so, it also gave them the opportunity to come in and actually do a trial. So, what they do is they occupy the various roles of plaintiffs or defendants, and lawyers, and prosecutors, and defense lawyers, and plaintiffs' lawyers. And so, they occupy all this, they put all this time in. I think that the National was a murder case. Was that correct? And so, they take all these roles, and they come and practice. And what's the most admirable thing is this, is that these kids go to school all day long, and then afterwards, they go practice. And I know, having left the courthouse late at night sometimes, or in the afternoon late, they're just coming in, and they work till eight, nine o'clock at night sometimes?
Usually, 6:30, but some scrum just gets longer.
Okay. And put all this hard work in, and also the coaches, and of course Haley, she's one of our local prosecutors here, excellent prosecutor. She and I do battle all the time against each other, and so, what a wonderful job. But, they come in and do that, so you have the coaches, and you also have the attorney advisor, and they come in and put all this time in. And they were the number-one team this year in North Carolina. And what, they were probably close to about 90 teams competing across the state. Is that about right?
Maybe across the state.
Across the state, right. And so, they were the number-one team in the state. They won the state championship. And then, they competed, what was it, in May, late May, May 17, something like that? In the national championship. And out of 47 different teams, they wound up being eighth. So, what an amazing job. So, I want to say on behalf of the City Council, and the mayor, and the city of Greenville, and our city manager, congratulations to all of you. What a wonderful thing, and I'm so happy you guys came down tonight, and we can honor you, because this is a big deal, because what you guys have done is put Greenville on the map. Because when you go there, they go, "Where are you from?" You'll probably say Greenville, and go, "South Carolina." "No, we're North Carolina." So, thank you for letting us help us to grow Greenville greater, as I always say. And again, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. And I would like to call forward Kamala Smith and Travis Wellborn. So, it's always my honor to recognize the good work of city employees, and our organization is committed to building a high-performing and diverse workforce. And each year, our city, we select two employees to participate in the Greenville-Pitt County Chamber of Commerce Leadership Institute. This program provides participants an in-depth view of the community issues, and introduces them to opportunities to get involved. Participants study the qualities that make an effective leader while learning and honing their sense of leadership, and style, and skills. And tonight, we have the pleasure of recognizing Deputy City Clerk Kamala Smith, as well as City Engineer III, Travis Wellborn, who both completed the Chambers Leadership Institute. The institute ran for eight months. They, in addition to doing their work, committed themselves to the regular schedule of participating in the Leadership Institute, and learning more about the city of Greenville, and also themselves. And so, please join me in congratulating Kamala, as well as Travis, on a job well done. Okay. Now, we have some recognition of our finance department. So, I want to invite the city of Greenville Finance Department to join me up here. Okay, ladies. Hello. So, as I mentioned a little earlier, it's always an honor for me to be able to recognize good work, great work, of our city employee and our city employee team, and I have the honor tonight of recognizing the finance department for two awards that have been received. First of all, I want to recognize the finance department for receiving the 2020 Triple Crown, for being a 2020 Triple Crown winner. It's awarded by the Government Finance Officers Association. The Triple Crown designation recognizes governments that have received GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, the Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award, and Distinguished Budget Presentation for a Fiscal Year. The city of Greenville is one of only 317 governments that won, in the United States, actually in Canada, that won the Triple Crown Award in 2020. This designation represents a significant achievement. To qualify each entity, the city has to meet the high standards of these three separate award programs, and each award program recognizes governments that produce reports that communicate their financial stories in a transparent manner, and meet applicable standards. So, congratulations on the Triple Crown Award. So, for our purchasing team, I'd like to recognize the purchasing team for the Sustained Professional Purchasing Award. The city of Greenville has met the requirement to receive the 2022 Sustained Professional Purchasing Award. This is presented annually by the North Carolina Association of Governmental Purchasing to recognize member agencies that have demonstrated excellence in purchasing standards during the calendar year. The criteria for the award include the use of technology, minority outreach, staff certification, customer training, vendor training, and the use of recycled products. The city of Greenville is one of 15 agencies throughout in the association that have won this award. So, please join me in congratulating the purchasing department.
All right. Let's move on to the public comment period. Public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were scheduled to be a subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes will be allocated, with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk will speak in order, register until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
We do not have any registered speakers. Mayor Connolly.
All right. I guess we'll go in alphabetical order for city staff. Please come forward to air your grievances. Specifically with the city manager's office. Anyone that would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to appointments.
Okay, yes, sir. We have appointments to the E&amp;C Alliance. What we need is three members, and the appointment of a city council liaison. Current members include Mr. Robert Cherry and Allison Siebel.
I'd like to reappoint Mr. Robert Cherry.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Bell. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
All right. Motion passes six zero. Okay. And we need two more appointments, voting members, and then the appointment of one city council liaison, and just a reminder, that would be a non-voting member of the board.
I don't have an appointment for the others, but I'd like to reappoint Councilmember Bell as our non-voting liaison.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Robinson. Any other discussion on that?
No. Wait for it, wait for it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
All right. Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Councilmember Bell. Did I say congratulations, Mr. Cherry?
I did.
Sure, I'm saying it now.
So, we need two other...
We need two more. And again, Allison Siebel is...
Yeah, I'd just like to weigh in. Ms. Siebel reached out to me and said that she's got a lot on her plate right now, and that she would not like to be reappointed, so I just want to share that with council.
All right. So, I think we need to, and I don't know of any other names that are available to us at the moment, so we should absolutely, if anybody's got anyone, circulate them, and we can maybe get it in Thursday.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. And should we circulate that information in the community, if there's folks in the community that are interested?
Do it right now.
Just, if you're interested in serving on the board of the E&amp;C Alliance, please do a Talent Bank form for that. Please contact Valerie, or contact me, and complete a Talent Bank form, because that E&amp;C Alliance is just such an important organization for our community, and it's very important to have members of the community on there who represent our entire community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I guess that's it then, right?
That concludes those appointments. Yes, sir.
All right. That means we will move on to the consent agenda. We're just doing the E&amp;C.
Yeah.
So, Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items. Item five is a resolution amending the city of Greenville personnel policy. Item six is the first reading of ordinances, making various revisions to the city code. Item seven is a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Terrell County to provide building inspection services. Item eight is a partial deed of release for River Hills Inc. and the city of Greenville NC substitution of trustee. Item number nine is a resolution accepting dedication of rights away in easements for Fieldstone II at Landover. Item 10 is a resolution accepting dedication of rights away in easement for Mill Creek Phase III. Item 11 is a resolution accepting dedication of rights away in easement for Taberna Phase IV, and revision of Lot 12. Item 12 is a request by the police department to utilize asset forfeiture funds. Item 13 is the 23-25 Police Services Agreement between the city of Greenville and the Greenville Housing Authority. Item 14 is Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge fiscal year 23-24 contract for service. Item 15 is a contract for the Ferguson Group for 23-24. Item 16 is a contract award for the 23 Stormwater Repair Project and the approval of Task Order Number Three for construction engineering and inspection and construction material testing on-call contract. Item 17 is the Town Common Bulkhead and Esplanade Replacement Project, Task Order Number Two. And item 18 is the Ordinance and Reimbursement Resolution Amending Greenville Utilities Commission FY 22-23 Budget and Various Capital Projects Budgets.
Councilmember Blackburn.
I'd like to pull items eight, 14, and 17 from the consent agenda, but otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve the remaining items.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made, and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We'll move to item number eight.
Thanks. Mayor, item eight is the partial deed of release for River Hills Inc. and the city of Greenville NC substitution trustee. I'll turn that over to the city attorney's office for questions.
Uh-oh. Got a nay coming up. Are you sure you want to pull this item?
It's our saves. I don't know. Good evening.
It's too important for our manual.
So, I think staff's available for questions.
Counsel, could you just, I just wanted to bring this forward, because I have a feeling it has to do with the corporation that was in place, possibly the sewer service. Can you just talk a little bit about what this is, just briefly?
Yeah, absolutely. And so, I might call on our engineer, Ms. Lisa Kirby, to speak on it as well. But essentially, this is a particular parcel that's located on the corner of East 10th Street and River Hills Drive, and it was part of a deed of trust tied to several different subdivisions that included public infrastructures that this particular developer was developing about 20 years ago. So, we entered this deed of trust in 2000. One of the parcels that was a part of the deed of trust was released in 2001, and the owner of the property has now come back, and they're trying to sell the property, but we still have this hold on the title, and so, they've asked us to release it. City staff did a lot of due diligence in terms of trying to determine which subdivisions this particular deed of trust was tied to, and they were able to identify four that the probability is high that they were actually tied to, that have been completed, and all of the streets and public infrastructure improvements have been accepted and are currently under maintenance by the city.
Thank you very much for that information, and I may have some follow-up questions for planning regarding that lot. This is the one right there, as you go west toward the daycare.
Yes, and it's about, it's a little over an acre and a half, and it's estimated to be a value based on the Pitt County tax assessments, a little over half a million dollars.
Is it currently being offered for sale? Is that...
Right. They're under contract to try to close on the property, and this is the last piece of the puzzle before they can sell and be able to offer clear title to the purchaser.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Move to item number 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 14 is the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge fiscal year 23-24 contract for service, and Holly Garrett will answer any questions, be available for questions of the council.
Come on back, Holly. You've got a presentation, don't you? Why don't we do that again?
All 50 slides.
This is really just, Holly, I'm not going to put you on the spot. This is really just, with the indulgence of my peers on council, the opportunity to say publicly, and from, you know, where I sit as a councilmember, how grateful we are to Emerge. And in our prior meeting, we just saw a presentation of all the projects, and Emerge and the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge have absolutely been transformative for our community. You can see it in the art, everything from the heartoscope projects over by the goalposts to the murals we have. We've even got utility boxes that are painted, and they've got, there's an NFT on one of them, people. I'm not kidding. It's the only one in the world. And it's just transformed our community, and I give so much credit to Holly and her staff, and the work that they've done, and I just wanted to do that prior to approving this item. I just wanted to take that moment to give buckets and buckets and heaps of gratitude for what the Pitt County Arts Council and Emerge are doing for our community.
Thank you so much.
And with that, motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Move to item 17.
You may now get off the spot.
Item 17 is the Town Common Bulkhead and Esplanade Replacement Project, Task Order Number Two. Don Octagon is available for questions.
Just a very quick question to say, this is, we've approved the project, we've got some funding, we're waiting on funding. Which particular item is this that we're approving?
So, this is moved forward with the development of construction documents.
Okay. All right.
On concept B, which is the per...
Right, for concept B. Okay, perfect. With that, motion to approve. Thank you.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. We'll now move on to the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side of no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by the, comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or councilmembers, including expressions of support, or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening's public hearing is on the proposed fiscal year 23-24 city of Greenville budgets, including the Shepherd Memorial Library, the Pitt County Convention and Visitor Authority, the Greenville Utilities Commission, and a public hearing to be held concurrently on the proposed stormwater management utility rate increase. Financial Services Director Byron Hayes has the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This will be a brief presentation on the proposed 2024 budget.
He's about to get another award.
The quadruple crown.
So, just to go over some brief budget highlights for the year. The 2024 proposed budget is a strong reflection of the city's mission, as you can see on the screen here, to provide all citizens with high-quality services in an open, inclusive, professional manner, ensuring that a community of excellence now and in the future. Just a couple of other budget highlights. This budget does maintain the council direction, maintains progress of capital projects, continued emphasis on the pavement management program, the stormwater utility plan that was approved in April of 2019 by council, continued investment in city staff, as well as a continued emphasis on traffic safety initiatives, a commitment to supporting economic development within the region through the annual financial contribution to the public-private partnerships, as well as a commitment to arts entertainment and special events in the city. And it also has a planned use of occupancy tax reserves to fund a sports complex feasibility study in the fiscal year. So, to look at some additional highlights by the council's goals and priorities, the council goal of community engagement, safety, and wellness, the highlights are that we have provided $250,000 for pedestrian safety projects in the budget, as well as $75,000 for the replacement of public safety tasers, and the creation of a new neighborhood and business services department to provide support and assistance for neighborhoods and small businesses within the community. Looking at the public infrastructure improvement goal for the council, we did increase the amount provided for pavement management to 2.9 million from 2.8 million in this upcoming budget. We also provide about $4.35 million in pay-as-you-go funding for various capital project initiatives for the year. And additionally, we provide additional, an additional debt service allocation to fund the remaining city match for the build grant. Additionally, we have $600,000 allocated for contracted mowing, landscaping, and other city, street maintenance of right-of-ways and city facilities, and there is the continuation of the stormwater utility plan approved by council, and that plan funds approximately $46.5 million in capital projects, as well as about $35.8 million in operations and preventative maintenance over the next 10 years. Now, additionally, that plan is funded with an additional increase in the stormwater rate of $1 per ERU in this fiscal year, the third of four increases in the plan. Looking at proactive economic development as a council goal, this budget does include $500,000 for the E&amp;C Alliance for citywide economic development initiatives, $17,000 for the Pitt Greenville, excuse me, the Greenville-Pitt County Chamber of Commerce for memberships, event sponsorships, and the Leadership Institute, and it also provides $100,000 for economic development initiatives in the Uptown area. Looking at the thriving and attractive community goal, the budget includes additional parks, an additional parks facility supervisor, and includes an upgraded park ranger position to full-time in order to maintain the additional amenities at Wildwood Park, and it also includes $10,000 for recent park development. The budget includes $91,000 for the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge for arts administration and additional Greenway art, and it provides $80,000 in funding for various special events throughout the fiscal year for the city of Greenville. And it also provides a 1.5% increase in funding for Shepherd Memorial Library. Also, looking at the high-performing diverse organization goal for the council, this budget does maintain the tax rate at 48.95 cents for the fiscal year, and includes a 2% wage increase for employees, and a full year of additional increases based on the compensation study that was, began halfway through last year, that was initiated by council the year before. And it also includes additional increases in employer-funded retirement rates. Those new rates are 14.1% for law enforcement, and 12.85% for non-law enforcement positions. Looking at the proposed budget in total, the total budget is just over $459 million, including all the entities, just for the city operating funds, it's about $160.5 million. Breaking that down by the city operating funds by each of the different funds, that does include about 63% of those operating funds within the general fund at about $101.5 million. So, looking at the general fund budget, the general fund budget is, as I said, $101.5 million. About 89 of every $100 comes within six different categories: property tax, sales tax, the GUC transfer, the utility franchise tax, rescue transports, EMS transports, and our power bill allocation. And as I stated before, this does maintain the property tax at 48.95 cents, and as you can see, over the course of the past 22 years, that property tax has continuously gone down. So, additionally, there are some fee changes in the fiscal year 2024 budget. The purpose of those fee changes are just to better align with the increased cost of services that the city has seen. Some of the breakdown by department of those fee changes, fire rescue has some permitting inspection fee, excuse me, some fee changes for permitting and inspections, as well as some transport and EMS standby service fee adjustments. The approximate increase to the department is about $20,000 in revenue. Planning and Development Services has some fee changes associated with the ABC application process, approximate increase of about $10,000. The Recreation and Parks Department has some rental fee changes for various rentals throughout the city, as well as some changes to the Aquatics and Fitness Center membership fees. the city, as well as some changes to the Aquatics and Fitness Center membership fees. And the purpose of that is just to better align with the increased cost of staffing for the, for the department, as well as some increased cost in cleanup. Total approximate increase for that revenue is $100,000. Public Works has some increase in charging for sanitation cart purchases, as well as cemetery fee changes to better align with the other cemeteries in the, in the area, approximate increase in revenue of $80,000. And lastly, the Financial Services and City Managers Offices Department have fees regarding the ABC permit and beer and wine license permitting process, just to remain in compliance with the state changes. An increase in revenue is minimal at about $10,000. And lastly, as I mentioned, the stormwater fee does increase $1 per ERU. It's not showing up on the slide, but this is the third of four years of increases. So the new ERU rate will be 835 per ERU.
May I ask a question? What, the acronym ERU, what does that stand for?
Equivalent Residential Unit.
Okay, thank you.
Most people have two, most, most lots.
And so just in summary, again, the total fund budget for 2024 is 459.7 million dollars. Of that, the city operating funds make up about 160.5 million of that. And lastly, any questions?
Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you for your presentation.
Brief presentation.
Yeah, I like it. Do we by any chance know what some of the increases would be, such as with the Aquatics and Fitness Center? Those fees, do you know, do we know what the increase will be?
The total amount?
Correct.
I can certainly get that. I don't have the data here. I'm gonna call Parks and Recreation Director Donna, I have to get her a quick to talk, talk about.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the Aquatics Fitness Center, most of those increases are for guest fees, not related directly to membership.
So not the membership itself?
Right.
Okay.
Mainly for our guest fees.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
We should put the budget on the desk.
Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Tony doesn't, doesn't need a budget, does he?
He's not opposed.
That could be exciting, though.
All right, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. And that is it, right?
That's right. The council will consider the approval of the budget on Thursday night.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to other items of business.
Thank you, Mayor. The final item of this evening is a Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 10 to the 2223 City of Greenville budget, the Special Revenue Grant Fund, the Engineering Capital Projects Fund, and the Capital Projects Fund. Again, Mr. Hayes.
The man of the night.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is Budget Amendment 10. This is Budget Amendment 10. Budget Amendment 10 includes adjustments to the general fund, the police, engineering, wrecking parks, and fire rescue capital projects funds, the ARPA fund, the CVA fund, and the Grant Special Revenue Fund. Breaking down the amendments, we are appropriating funding within the general fund for the city portion of the Pitt Greenville Airport, Airport Hangar Agreement. It's an increase to the general fund of $100,000. We are recognizing donations received for the United Way Campaign for this fiscal year. It's an increase in the general fund of $6,500. We are recording funding within the general fund to cover expenses associated with the creation of the Neighborhood and Business Services Department, an increase in the general fund of about $55,000. We are realigning department budgets within the general fund to better align with the year-end expense projections, an increase in the general fund of $705,000. We are recognizing revenue received from MetroNet as reimbursement for utility locates in the fiscal year, an increase in the general fund of $175,000. We are recognizing, or excuse me, reconciling the debt allocation to reflect the finalization of capital projects paid for with, with said debt. That is a net neutral impact to the fire rescue and wrecking parks capital projects of just under $400,000. We are closing the Epps Recreation Center renovation project as it is complete and reallocating the remaining budget to the City Pool Construction Project, a neutral impact to the wrecking parks capital projects fund of $33,000. And we are allocating, or excuse me, appropriating funding within the general fund for the purchase of a generator at the Public Safety Annex, increase to the various funds of $243,000. We are also appropriating funding in the CVA fund from the marketing reserve due to increased revenues in fiscal year 2022. It's an increase to the CVA fund of $123,000. We are reallocating remaining funds within the Premium Pay for Employees project in the ARPA fund and reallocating that to the Towne Common Bulkhead Project in the ARPA fund. That is a neutral change to the fund itself of $22,000. And we are closing the Public Safety Communications Equipment Project within the Fire Rescue Capital Projects Fund, a decrease in the Fire Rescue Capital Projects Fund of just under $100,000. And lastly, we are recognizing costs associated with finalizing the employee parking lot construction project, an increase to the Engineering Capital Projects Fund of just under $50,000. So as a result of these amendments, that increases the City Greenville Operating Fund budget to $173.6 million. And staff recommends approval of the operating fund ordinance, the capital projects fund ordinance, the engineering capital projects fund ordinance, and the special revenue fund ordinance. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hayes? Councilmember Daniels?
Yes. The transfer of funds from the Epps Center to the pool, does that include the parking that's to be done? Okay. He says yes. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And Councilmember Daniels has actually kind of prefaced my question, which is the City Pool Construction, is it at Epps? Is that ongoing work over there? What is this project?
Yes, ma'am. So the, the purpose of closing the Epps project is since it is complete and it ended up coming in under budget, we just reallocated the remaining budget and moved it over to the pool for that parking project.
Okay. So it's, it's, okay, so it's just for the parking lot? There's no new pool that I don't know about?
No, 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 it's not for a new pool. It's for the current.
We're getting a pool, we're getting a pool? That'd be great. I mean, I love that.
We're getting a puddle.
Okay, thank you.
And that's great. I attended a meeting over at Epps today, and that parking is definitely needed. So, thank you.
Could be additional parking spaces?
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
To approve?
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness, it's Monday. All right, we will move on to the review of the June 8th, 2023 city council agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 8th, the council will consider appointments to boards and commissions.
I'm so sorry, I grabbed the wrong handout. Hold on, I'm gonna pull it up really quick.
Can you pull it up, Valerie?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull it up.
Anybody want to sing a song?
I know the first one that we've got is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Councilmember Blackburn?
Let me work on that between now and Thursday.
Okay. The second would be the Board of Adjustment. Councilmember Bell?
I intend to nominate Dylan Gobley.
Okay. Next would be the, okay, I'm sorry, I was going on memory off of that. Hold on, I really do have to pull up the.
We got another Board of Adjustments, Hunt McKinnon.
There's two other, Hunt McKinnon and John Landrein.
Which is Councilmember Smiley?
Yeah, and I will, I'll identify a person for there, but at the moment, I'm continuing that.
Okay. And next is John Landrein, Mayor Connolly.
I am going to continue.
Okay. Next is the Environmental Advisory Commission, Councilmember Blackburn.
This is the position for a developer or someone in the development, construction, and real estate area. And I have a person. So, but I don't have their, I don't have, they don't know it yet. So I'll have that.
Okay, okay.
On Thursday.
Next is the GUC Commission, that's Kelly Darden, and unless you all take action, he is up for automatic reappointment.
He left the board. I thought he said.
He's eligible, Kelly.
Kelly Darden.
He's eligible.
He didn't leave? He told me he was leaving. Okay.
No, he's eligible.
All right, well, he's mine.
These two are not eligible.
Motion to reappoint.
Okay. We'll bring that back on Thursday. Yes, ma'am. Next is the Housing Authority for the Resident Commissioner, and they have said that they are nominating Ebony, I think Ebony.
Harris.
Harris. So I'll bring that back on Thursday. We also have the appointment for Luke Stavish, and that is for Mayor Protem Glover, and he is eligible to be reappointed. And I can bring that back on Thursday for you?
Yes, and I've spoken with him.
Okay. All right. Next is the Human Relations Council, Mayor Protem Glover.
Don't have anyone for the Human Relations Council.
Okay, I can bring that back on Thursday for you. Next is the Multimodal Transportation Commission, Councilmember Robinson.
I'm still looking at candidates for that, please.
Okay. Next is the Pitt Greenville Airport Authority, Councilmember Smiley.
I intend to nominate Tim Ferruzzi.
Okay. And then we've got one more appointment up there, Councilmember Robinson for Dan Mayo.
I intend to reappoint him.
Okay. Next is the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Councilmember Smiley.
I'm gonna, I'll continue that.
Okay. Next is the Planning and Zoning Commission, Councilmember Blackburn for Max Jordan III. He is eligible.
Let me continue that.
Okay. Next is Councilmember Smiley for Hat Maxwell's seat, he is no longer eligible.
Continue, please.
Next is for Mayor Protem Glover, Alan Thomas's seat, and he is eligible.
Says ineligible, doesn't it?
I'm sorry, yeah, I corrected that. He's eligible.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Continuing it till.
And I'll bring it back to you on Thursday.
Okay.
Okay. And next is the Police Community Relations Committee. Again, that's a direct appointment, Mayor Protem Glover. You want me to bring it back on Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. And finally, we've got the Youth Council, Mayor Protem Glover.
Are you gonna?
And I can bring it back on Thursday.
We'll do that.
Okay. And that concludes the appointments. Mayor Connolly.
Thank you very much.
So also on June 8th, the council will consider the following. They'll receive an update on the 902 Ward, on 902 Ward Street. The council will hold two public hearings, one is an, three public hearings. One is an ordinance to annex Fire Tower Commercial Park, Future Lots 1 and 2, the property involving a total of 18.31 acres located along the eastern and western right of way of South Square Drive and Chapman Road. Item five is an ordinance to annex Ridgewood Farms Phase 1 property involving a total of 24 acres located along the northern right of way of Thomas Langston Road and the current terminus of Stone Wood Drive. Item six is a second reading of ordinances making various revisions to city code. The council will also have other items of business. One is an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2324 City of Greenville budgets, including the Shepherd Memorial Library, the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitor Authority, and the Greenville Utilities Commission. And finally, the council will hold the discussion of the Village of the Arts overlay district zoning. That is the meeting for June the 8th, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the city manager's report.
Mayor, I have no reports.
Well, just because they allow me to run these meetings, I can make changes as I see fit. So we're gonna add a city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the floor.
Whoa.
You're gonna be here for a while, no. I just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce the city attorney's office summer intern, Ms. Mia Bond. Would you stand up, Mia? She is a native of Greenville and is a rising junior at New York University.
Yes.
And is interested in a career in law.
I think interns get standing O's, right?
Yes.
Yay!
And just because I can, I'm going to now open it up for the city clerk's report.
Well, Kamala is not here, but she's at home enjoying with her lovely family. I just wanted to note, she has earned her North Carolina Certified Municipal Clerk designation, and we are extremely proud of her. As you can see, she's killing it. So very proud to have her in the office.
Now I guess I'll let some of the councilmembers speak.
Just because you can.
Yeah, just because I can.
If you can change me, and you can take it away.
You want me to take it away?
Yeah.
I don't think so. Councilmember Robinson.
I believe council's getting her to go on a nice vacation, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
With his bride?
Thank you.
Have a great trip, be safe, and enjoy your time off.
Thank you.
That's all my comments.
All right. Councilmember Bell?
No comment.
Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Thank you.
She's got two glasses and two pages.
Two glasses and two pages. I just had to reprint it, because I ran out of black ink. Do y'all ever do that? You run out of black ink, so you just print it in blue? Anyway, that's why I have two copies. Just want to kind of shout out, thank to my, thank you to all my peers on council. We're wrapping up our budget. I think we've shown just an amazing amount of support for each other and just good ideas, and it's just been a very, very pleasant and just professionally, as a member of council, satisfying experience. And so I just really want to commend all my peers on council for, for what has really been a very productive and just very community-focused budget season. And of course, thanks to the staff and our city manager and council and clerk for all of their work, which they do 24/7, 365. And I, I want to just sort of take a moment. Here we are, June 5th. It is the beginning of June, which is LGBTQ Pride Month. And a lot of us, we kind of see rainbows, we know we're celebrating something. And I just kind of did a little bit of a deep dive on LGBTQ Pride Month and where it started and why we celebrate it. During this month, the goal is to celebrate our brothers and our sisters and our coworkers and everyone in our community who are homosexual, transgender, bisexual, or queer. Queer is the term that includes many, many types of gender expression, such as intersexuality. June is the time when we spotlight and honor and commemorate them. But specifically, it commemorates June 28th of 1969. I think a lot of us have had heard the term Stonewall, Stonewall Riot, Stonewall Uprising. Maybe we kind of didn't know what happened. Well, this was a different time, and I remember these times, when you could not be, you could not express same-sex affection in public. You could be arrested. There were laws against it. Specifically, in New York City, you risked going to prison for such behaviors as holding hands, kissing, or dancing with someone of the same sex. And harassment of homosexuals was not only accepted, it was promoted. And bars that invited and welcomed homosexual members became safe places. And the Stonewall Inn was one of those safe places. It was a place in Greenwich Village in New York City. And it was, it was a place where not only were, were homosexuals welcomed, it also became a place where there, there are people who cared for them, their allies came. But specifically, it was a place where drag queens were welcomed and they were allowed to perform, and that art was cultivated. So in June 28th night, so, so what had been happening in a lot of these bars and places was that, that there would be police raids. They'd go in and they'd arrest folks, and they would even say that whenever there was a certain number of homosexual people gathered, it was by nature disorderly. So they were basically able to arrest homosexuals just for being together. So a little bit more about Stonewall, it was affordable and it was, it had become not only the nightly home for homosexuals and drag queens, but also for homeless people and homeless gay youths, a lot of times even today are still kicked out of their homes. So what happened, though, on June 28th, 1969, these police raids had been happening, this kind of ongoing climate of violence, and basically, the homosexual, the gay community said, "We've had enough," and they actually had an uprising. And it was, bricks were involved, and I don't ever condone violence, but this was kind of the level that it got to. And what happened was a turning point, where for the first time in American history, gays were able to say, "We're here, and we're proud, and we're gonna stand up for ourselves because we're being beaten up, and now we're gonna fight back." Again, not ever condoning violence, and fortunately, that movement is not a violent movement. It is a rainbow and loving movement, and continues today as a loving, accepting movement. And so when we look at June as Pride, LGBTQ Pride Month, what we're looking at is this just amazing shift in our country, where it went from a time where if you were homosexual, you were shunned, you were shamed, and you were probably gonna be beaten up if you exhibited that kind of behavior in public. Until now, we celebrate it, and it's just a good time to say, wow, look at all these amazing contributions from our LGBTQ community, and specifically in the arts, theater, writing, music, visual arts, everywhere. So I just want to kind of conclude my remarks by saying that the first gay pride parade took place on June 28, 1970, on the one-year anniversary of Stonewall, and the parade's official chant was, "Say it loud, gay is proud." So to all my LGBTQ brothers and sisters and friends, you mean so much to me, my little heart. Thank you for all you do, and happy Pride Month. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels?
Okay. I would like to wish a 100th birthday to Ms. Mae Tyson Jackson, and a happy belated birthday to my mom, Darlene Crandall. I'm not gonna tell you guys her age. I'd like to say congratulations to Ms. Cam Smith, echoing our Madam Clerk on her accomplishments, and also to Ms. Ashley Gaskins on your engagement.
I miss that one.
We miss you, we wish you many, many years of love and joy.
All right, y'all good? Mayor Protem Glover? You're good?
I'm good.
All I got is, we tried, right? We tried. Every year, we keep saying that this is our year to go to Omaha, and then this one team from, what's it called, UVA, always seems to ruin it for us. Well, maybe just this one time, because I think we ruined it for them last year.
That's exactly right.
So, so if. It's all, it's all good. We'll get it. Next year's gonna be our year, so congratulations to Pirates on a successful season. They played very well. They beat Oklahoma the first game, lost to Virginia, it was a really good game, and the next game, they beat Oklahoma again, and unfortunately, lost to Virginia up in Virginia, but played very well. Congratulations to them on a good season. Congratulations to Cliff. He's doing a great job with the program over there and continuing to bring a lot of notoriety, not only to the university, the baseball program, but also to the city. It's good to be able to see one of our athletic teams doing such a great job on the national stage, so congratulations to them. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn. All right, motion's made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Motion passes six zero.
We are adjourned.